Good evening. I am Karen McCoy with the Greater Kokomo Chamber, a division of the Greater Kokomo Alliance. Welcome to the 2015 City Primary Election Debate brought to you by the Kokomo Perspective, the Kokomo Tribune, the Greater Kokomo Chamber of Commerce, and the League of Women Voters. Tonight will feature the candidates running for the Kokomo Common Council at Large seats on the Republican and Democratic tickets. Don Wilson, publisher of the Kokomo Perspective, will be the moderator for tonight's event. Each session is scheduled to last 45 minutes. This event is being filmed for broadcast on KGOV. The candidates participating and running for Kokomo Common Council at Large on the Republican ticket are Brad Bagwell, James Clark, Joshua Layton, and Phil Thurston. The candidates participating, running for Kokomo Common Council at Large on the Democratic ticket are Robert Hayes, Mike Kennedy, Howard Overton, and Steve Whiteheart. The format for each session is as follows. Each candidate will be given two minutes for an opening statement. We will then begin the questions with each candidate being given the opportunity to respond first to a question on a rotating basis. Each candidate will have two minutes to respond. If the moderator feels additional comment should be made, he will offer this to the candidates. The League of Women Voters will maintain the timing. We'd like to thank everyone for attending or viewing tonight's debate. We'd also like to thank the candidates for their participation. It is important that the voters be able to hear the candidates' positions on issues leading up to the May 5th primary election. And we now request that everyone silence their cellphones. And I would like to welcome Perspective publisher, Don Wilson, to the podium.
Well, you ready to begin? Brad, you're first.
I'm Brad Bagwell. I'd like to thank you, Don, and the Perspective, as well as the Tribune and the League of Women Voters. I forget the fourth one, but... Thanks for inviting us all to tonight's forum. I've been in politics for several years. I was a county commissioner for several years. I've served as the Republican Party Chairman and have been a member of this community since I was born, basically. Lived in Greentown, lived in Kokomo the last two and a half years. Kind of decided at the last minute, I think, we were just talking about some things and it just hit me that I needed to run for the at-large seat for the county council, or the city council, I'm sorry. And so we decided and got the approval from my wife and so here we are. As I said, I've served the community for a number of years, probably 20 years total in various capacities. I still serve on a couple boards. Community Corrections Advisory Board, I'm president of that board. I sit on the US 31 Coalition Board of Directors and have, again, continue to serve the community even though I'm no longer in office, but I think I'd really like to continue to serve the community as a city councilman and make sure that there becomes a level of checks and balances between the council and the mayor's office. Whether it's a Republican mayor or a Democrat mayor, there needs to be checks and balances between those two branches of government. And I'm going to be there to try to help make sure that happens and to make sure that we spend taxpayers' dollars wisely and efficiently. Thanks.
James Clark.
Hi, my name is James Clark. I own Jim's Pizza on Home Avenue. I've lived here all my life. I'm 55 years old. I served in the Armed Forces. And I just, at the last minute, decided I wanted to run for the city council where maybe I could help, you know, work with the city, you know what I'm saying? And make things right, like Brad said, you know, you've got to make sure the city council and the mayor, you've got the same figures on paper, you know? So... That's, you know... I'm glad to see all of you who's here tonight, you know? I want to thank the people that put it on, you know? So, I guess that sums it up.
Thank you. Thank you. Joshua Layton.
Hi. I'm Josh Layton. I've lived in Kokomo my whole life. I have four daughters. I pushed the button now. Is it on now? Try that one. It's on. Yeah, alright, there we go. Alright. My name is Josh Layton. I've lived in Kokomo my whole life. I have, I'm married. I have four daughters. Crazy daughters. The reason I come to do this is I'm seeing something that a lot of Americans are seeing across the United States in different counties and cities alike. It's a lot, it's a loss of constitutional and personal rights that were given to us at our founding of this country. Whether it's just slight infringement, maybe just leaking over, or a total loss. My objective is to bring a sense of personal responsibility and... Okay, one minute. Personal responsibility back to our local governments. I would like to see it on the state level and the federal levels as well, but, you know, doing what I can. I want, I would like to see more responsibility in our local city here, our local town here in Kokomo. We're seeing things across the board that just doesn't make sense here in Kokomo. We're seeing fluffy animals out in the middle of the street and baseball stadiums against the little people while we've got holes the size of your tire in the middle of the road. So, that is a checks and balance. That's an idea of setting out to do what you're supposed to do and getting it done. Thank you.
Phil Thurston.
Hi, I'm Phil Thurston. First of all, let me say that it's a privilege to have the opportunity to run for this position, whether I'm elected or not, and it'd be a privilege to serve. I'm a lifelong resident of Kokomo. I'm a graduate of Kokomo High School. I'm married for 35 years. I have two children. I have two grandchildren. I served in the United States Marine Corps and I'm a Vietnam War veteran. When I came home from the Marine Corps, I was hired by then Republican Mayor John Miller on the Kokomo Fire Department, and I worked there for 30 years. Proud of my service, retired. After the fire department, I worked at the Kokomo Housing Authority for a period of years. So, I've also served on Kokomo Center School Board, served on the school board during a period of time when it was pretty controversial, and so I'm used to a little bit of that. I think my experience as a deputy executive director and an executive director of a housing authority, along with my experience as Kokomo Center School Board member, gives me the experience I need to be your councilman. Thank you.
Question. Begin with Brad. The Kokomo Common Council stopped a citywide smoking ban last year on a narrow 5-4 vote. What is your position on the smoking ban? And if elected, will you seek to resurrect the legislation?
I think one of the things that was mentioned was lack of, or loss of personal freedoms in one of the introductions here, and I think that's one of the areas I think that we need to look at carefully as what we do to limit personal choice and personal freedoms. So I understand there was some legislation at the State House, state legislation that was planned to address smoking in public places. I guess I would rather work with the state legislators, both Republicans and Democrats at the State House, to try to come up with something that works statewide and then abide by whatever state regulations, state statutes are applicable and apply those to Kokomo. I don't see a need for Kokomo to do something above and beyond what the state statute might be if state statute allows or disallows smoking in public places, but I'd rather see what happens there. It's not just what happens in Kokomo. If smoking truly is an issue, it's a statewide issue. It's a national issue, but again, we start at one look, one site, one level and go to the next. Let's let the state decide what the right things for statewide issues are and let us abide by those.
James.
Okay. I mean, it's, you know, I don't really see how the government can tell you, you know, what you can and can't do in your own place, you know what I'm saying? Just like I own a restaurant, you know, I should have the right to say whether or not people come to my restaurant and smoke, you know what I'm saying? In the bars, you know, if people want to go in the bar and smoke, that should be up to the bar owner, you know what I'm saying? You know, I was, what right does anybody have to tell you what to do? They're taking, what they're doing is they're just taking the rights away from Americans, you know what I'm saying? I served in the Armed Forces, you know? I felt like I fought for our rights to do what we want to do over the years, you know what I'm saying? As long as we're alive, we should be allowed to do what we want to do, you know? Nobody should be allowed to take that right away from us, you know?
Thank you. Joshua.
This again boils down to personal responsibilities and freedom. What we have is a government that's trying to legislate morality through your cigarette smoke or whatever. I smoked for, I don't know, 10 years, 12 years, and then I quit and I haven't smoked a cigarette for about the same. What this boils down to is a government trying to regulate you into a moral position, well that's, that's just not possible. For a government to come down and tell you that, that... Let's go this way. I'm sorry about that. It seems to me that here a while back in our common council here in Kokomo, and I think, I think I remember reading about this, there was discussion about stopping people from stopping, from not being able to smoke when they're coming through a drive-through. So where does it end? How far can you take this? At what point does it become an infringement? I believe if you want to smoke, go smoke. Taking your own life in your hands, but that's all a part of personal responsibility, so... This whole business of legislating morality in this sense is just, it just doesn't work. Thank you.
Well, a person's rights end where another person's rights begin. And unfortunately, we don't all see it that way. Now, I don't have a real problem with the smoking law that was passed by the state, and I don't see any reason why the city council would pass a law that would be more restrictive than the state. The only problem that I have with any of it is that the state statute says that you can't smoke within eight feet of an entrance. And to be frank with you, that's, that's just not enough. It should be 25 feet. Eight feet, you're walking through the smoke, you're getting secondhand smoke, and you just can't stop that. So the only thing that I would be in favor of, either state or local, is to widen that gap and make it 25 feet.
Can I say something again? No, just a minute, please. James and Joshua, what about the rights of people that want to go to the establishment, enjoy their meal, their drinks, that do not smoke, and they're concerned with secondhand smoke? James, first.
Well, I mean, you know, that's just, I mean, that's a chance you take. I started smoking when I was eight years old, and I smoked till about 10 years ago, you know what I'm saying? So, I know what the smokers are going through, and I know what the non-smokers are going through, you know what I'm saying? Because I don't smoke now, you know what I'm saying? But I don't feel like I have the right to say, you know, "Don't smoke around me because, you know, it's not your right, it's not your right to smoke around me," you know what I'm saying? I just don't feel like I have that right to tell them that. So...
Joshua.
Yeah. I totally agree that a person's liberties, personal liberties and constitutional rights and everything end at where another person's begins. My problem with this is, if you own an establishment, this is your establishment. You make the rules in your establishment. If somebody doesn't like the rules you have, I'll give you an example. I carry a gun just about everywhere I go. I won't go NBW3s. They don't, they have a company policy that doesn't allow for people to carry armed in their establishment. More power to you, you know? I'm just not going to go in there because of it. Same with smoking. If you don't like the rules that this company has established for themselves and their policy, you don't have to go to the store, or you don't have to go to the bar or the restaurant. That's, that's personal liberty, guys.
Second question. James will begin with you. The state legislature and Governor Pence recently passed, signed, and then fixed the Religious Freedom Restoration Act. The city of Indianapolis has a civil rights ordinance to protect the LGBT community from discrimination. What is your opinion of the RFRA? And if elected, would you seek legislation similar to that adopted in Indianapolis?
Well, once again, like I said, I own a business, you know? And I feel like that ends are such a thing that you have the right to refuse service to anybody that you want, you know what I'm saying? I've always heard that, you have the right to refuse service in a business to anybody that you want, okay? So, therefore, if I don't feel like somebody should be served in my restaurant, I don't think, I don't think I should have to serve them, you know? Tell them to leave, you know? If somebody's standing at my counter, talking on their cellphone, I told my people, I said, "Walk away from them. We're not going to wait on them. We're going to wait until they get off their phone." We don't have to wait on nobody standing around because you can't take somebody's order that's standing there talking on their cellphone and get their order right, you know? So that creates a problem, you know? If I got a problem with the way somebody else comes in my restaurant, you know, then I'm not going to serve them, you know? And I'll tell my people to walk away from them. If they don't like it, I'll tell them why they walked away from it, you know what I'm saying? It just extends to the situation of you should have the right to serve who you want, you should have the right to not serve who you want, you know what I'm saying? And, you know, I'm not, I'm not discriminating, because I don't discriminate against nobody, you know what I'm saying? And if a gay person comes to my restaurant, if they got money, I'm taking their money. If a black person comes to my restaurant, I'm taking their money. If a Chinese person comes to my restaurant, I'm taking their money. I don't care who they are, as long as they conduct yourself in a manner, I'm taking their money, you know? That's the way it's got, that's the way it should be, I mean, you know? Why shouldn't they have rights? I mean, to me, everybody in the United States should have rights, and that's why I said earlier, I went in the Army, I fought for everybody's freedom. Rights are your freedom, you know what I'm saying? That's the bottom line. Your rights are your freedom. And, you know, if they're going to take, start taking your freedom and your rights away from, what do you have? Nothing, you know? Not a thing. Okay?
Thank you. Joshua.
I love reading articles, and what I love most about reading articles is reading the comments underneath them. You can learn a lot about, about people and ideas just by reading the posts that are posted on the article. And I was reading about this spat between Debbie Wasserman Schultz and Rand Paul. And it was on abortion and everything, which I know that's what we're talking about, but what was brought up, what Debbie Wasserman Schultz stated was that a woman has a right to abort her baby at any time, that that is a decision that is between her, her doctor, and her god. Now, what, we're giving women this right of conscience over murdering a child, but we're not going to allow a business owner to have the same right of religious, of a moral, religious conscience and to act on it in their own business and, yeah, in their own business. So, here's how I feel about it. This is your business, just as I stated earlier about the smoking. This is your business. You conduct your business as you see fit. The people will vote with their feet if they don't feel your business is righteous in their eyes. If they don't feel you're just in what you're doing at your business, people won't come to your establishment. But yes, personal responsibility. The First Amendment to the US Constitution, yes, I support it. Absolutely.
Bill.
The Religious Freedom Restoration Act. You know, Indiana is state number 20 to pass a law like this. And a law was passed nationally in 1993 under then-President Bill Clinton. Now, this law got a lot of controversy. I don't think that the intent of the law in the beginning was to create such a stir, but it did, and I am not in favor of anyone being discriminated against, and therefore I would never support any legislation that would do that. I do sometimes think that people jump on causes that aren't always necessary. I think this got really way to the left, and it probably shouldn't have. They are making a movement now to correct it. I'm not sure that they've gone far enough to correct it, but I don't favor any legislation, whether it's state or local, that discriminates.
Brad.
Again, there is state legislation, there's federal legislation. Yeah, the state legislation, as Phil said, there's at least 20 other states that have passed similar legislation. There is a federal act that has the Religious Freedom Restoration Act is a federal law. Unfortunately, it used to be that if you went into someplace and they say, you know, "I don't want to bake a cake for you because of whatever reason," you walked out the door and you went down the street to another baker and you got your cake there. Today, it's, "You're not going to bake a cake for me, so I'm going to sue you." That's what my opinion of the Religious Freedom Restoration Act is done. It allows someone to refuse service if they decide they want to do that. And as was, has been said again, that's, that's the choice and the chance that a business owner has to take, whether or not they want to continue to do business or be branded as someone who is, who discriminates against people. You know, as a business owner, there have been some signs, some vinyl lettering that I've made that's really kind of offensive, in my opinion, but that's what the customer wanted on in the back of his truck. So I cut the vinyl out for him and gave it to him, and he put it on the back of his truck. That's his option to put that on his, on his vehicle to express his freedom of speech. I definitely wouldn't put it on the back of my vehicle, but most people wouldn't, but that was what he wanted to do. People have the option to say whether or not they want to do business with people and suffer the consequences or suffer the, or reap the rewards for doing that. As I recall, there's a pizza place that was doing, that kind of stood up for the implementation of this act, and with a lot of support, internet support and Facebook support and so on, they ended up getting close to half a million dollars in support for their legal fees for trying to stand up to that. So, I think, again, we need to take, take the federal legislation and the new state legislation and go from there.
Wait a minute. Hold it, Joshua.
Just take one second.
Hold it, Joshua. I'm not that.
Who are you yelling at?
Be quiet. If, please, I'll get you there.
As a council member.
As a council member.
If you run into a situation where somebody's acting against you and your religious freedom, I will stand with you at your establishment. That's all I wanted to say, brother.
If legislation came in front of you for a vote that would refuse, give the merchant the ability to refuse service for sexual preference, race, or religion, would you vote for it? Brad.
Again, I'd like to see what this...
Would you vote? Would you vote for it?
I'd like to see what the final outcome of the state legislation is to see if I need to vote for a city ordinance. At this point, a hypothetical ordinance, I have no idea what it might say. You know, I'd like to do some studying on what a potential ordinance might look like before I'd vote on anything. I'm not going to say I'm going to vote yes or no on anything until I actually see the legislation or the proposed legislation and have a chance to study it.
Okay. No, I wouldn't vote for it, you know? I mean, I just, here again, we're talking about, you know, are we going to take all the rights away from all the people, you know? No, I wouldn't vote for it. I'm sorry, as a city councilman, no, I wouldn't vote for it, you know? I think people should have their rights, you know?
Joshua.
Yeah, would you repeat the question?
If you owned a, if you were sitting on the city council and legislation came in front of you that would allow the individual business owner to refuse service based on sexual preference, race, or religion, would you vote for that? Allow the business to refuse service based on any of those three factors?
No, I wouldn't vote in favor of that. I would hope the legislation would come across the desk to allow business to operate as they see fit. That would be something I would be able to vote on. Just to vote, you're asking me if I would vote in favor of someone discriminating against... Okay. I would vote in favor of a business acting in their own best interest to run their business as they see fit.
The answer to your question is no, because the next step would be they're going to deny a person's service because of their age.
Joshua. Streets and sidewalks in Kokomo have been identified by several of the candidates in this election as a priority. Do you believe streets and sidewalks are in need of attention? And if so, what would you do to address them?
Well, let me tell you a story. I was going down Webster Street. I live close to Webster and I was heading south. Heading down Webster Street and I buried my right front tire in a pothole the size of my truck tire. It's a truck, it's a big truck, Dodge Ram. I buried the front tire, right front tire, in a pothole. Bounces, throws me all over my truck. I gathered my wits, drive another 100 feet, and I see the city planting topiary in the middle of the, in the middle of the road over there. And a flying, a flying pig, I think is what it was, I'm not sure what it was. And I'm thinking, I just about lost my tire back here, and we're planting flowers in the middle of the street. If you head further south on Webster, almost to Vinton Circle, you'll notice a stretch of about 50 feet of off-road in the middle of the road. So yes, we are, we have lost focus on what our job is here in Kokomo, and that's to supply a decent road for somebody. One of them is to supply a decent road for people to drive on here. I think we are, this image thing is getting in the way of what our first responsibilities are.
There are a lot of potholes in town, a lot of them. The streets are, in some areas are crumbling, and the sidewalks need repair. There's been a lot of attention given to the downtown area, and it seems like some of the outlining areas are being forsaken, basically. What needs to be done now is temporary fix. I mean, the city street department needs to get out and fill those potholes to stop some of these people that have ruptured tires. And then, as a council member, I think the council should encourage the mayor to bring forth a budget to do some serious upgrading of the streets and sidewalks in Kokomo.
Brad.
Are streets and sidewalks, should they be a priority? Simple answer, yes. One of the mantras during annexation, during all the annexation process was, you know, people from outside the city use our streets and our side streets to drive into Kokomo and we, you know, so obviously streets were an important issue during annexation, but it seems that since that time, not very many streets have been paved in Kokomo except for those downtown, again, you know, everything goes on downtown, it seems, which is fine. But there's more to, more to the city of Kokomo than, than the downtown area, which is one of the reasons I ran on the at-large, on the at-large seat, because I didn't want to be restricted to a district. I think there's things going on all over the city, things that should be going on all over the city that aren't. A lot of money is being spent downtown. I don't know where all the money's coming from. I know that one of the mayoral candidates asked for information on the amount of money that was spent on legislation or litigation. I'm not sure if he's been able to get that information yet. So we're, it would be interesting...
we, you know, so obviously streets were an important issue during annexation, but it seems that since that time, not very many streets have been paved in Kokomo, except for those downtown. Again, you know, everything goes on downtown, it seems, which is fine. But there's more to, more to the city of Kokomo than, than down, the downtown area, which is one of the reasons I ran on the, on that large seat, because I didn't want to be restricted to a, a district. I think there's things going on all over the city, things that should be going on all over the city that aren't. A lot of money's being spent downtown. I don't know where all the money's coming from. I know that one of the mayoral candidates asked for information on the amount of money that was spent on legislation or litigation. I'm not sure if he's been able to get that information yet. So we're, it would be interesting to see why we're spending, where the city of Kokomo is spending its money. And that, again, that's, that's the city council's responsibility. The city council is there to approve a budget and to make sure that it's spent where it's supposed to be spent. There are the checks and balances between the, the legislative branch, which is what the city council is, and the executive branch, which is the, which is the mayor. And there needs to be that checks and balances. We don't seem to have a lot of that right now. I'm not sure. You can ask the, the existing, or the seating, sitting council members when they get up here next to know if they can tell you exactly how much money was spent on those kinds of issues, and how much was spent on, on a lot of other things that are going on in the downtown area.
Clark?
Okay, it seems like we all agree up here, huh? Everybody agrees that roads need paved instead of black, instead of potholes paved, you know? The thing is, when I bought my business, I had a lot of potholes in the parking lot, you know? And every year I'd go to the patch and I'd throw it in there, and then cars would run over it, it'd come out, you know? Also, not would it come out, but the hole would get bigger, you know what I'm saying? I mean, I had, I had a hole big enough. I had a very Volkswagen just to fill in the pothole, you know what I'm saying? That's how big it was, you know? And it was because of over the 18 years I was in business that it grew bigger and bigger, you know? And that's what they're going to do. Them potholes are going to grow bigger and bigger every year, you know what I'm saying? When that poth, when that patch comes out that's in there, now, I know they got to do what they got to do just to make it work, okay, to keep people from tearing up their vehicles, you know what I'm saying? But, you know, I'm telling you, when the patch comes out, the hole's going to be bigger. That's all, that's all there is to it. I mean, it's the bottom line, you know? So why make a hole bigger? Why not just fix it right to begin with? That's what I did. I spent $10,000 on my parking lot. You know, I don't have a problem with my parking lot now, you know? It was done, it was done right, you know? So that's what you got to do, spend the money and spend it right, you know? Okay, that's all I got to say.
Mr. Layton, what percentage of streets and sidewalks do you think are in need of repair, drastic repair?
Oh, I don't have an answer for that. I wouldn't know.
So we don't know if it's, so you don't know if you would want to devote a lot of money to the budget for the street and sidewalk repair as opposed to planting flowers, or whatever the case may be?
Yeah, I would want to devote the appropriate amount of money to get the roads and the sidewalks fixed that need fixed, but I have no idea what the percentage of sidewalks and roads that need fixed. I have, I don't even have the money to assess that all the time. That would, that would take a group of, of council members to come together to be able to come up with that figure.
Kokomo and observe yourself.
Yeah, I work 50 to 60 hours a week. I'm raising four daughters and, and with my wife's health, obviously. I don't have time to drive down every single road in this town.
Well, it would only be a guess on my part. There are a lot of streets that need some repair. I'd probably say 50% of the streets in Kokomo probably need some work. The street department could tell you, and what, as a councilman, what I'd simply ask is for the street department to come forth with, you know, an estimate of what, what it's going to take to straighten it out.
Well, I agree with that. One of the things that, when I was county commissioner, we, we, prior to me becoming a county commissioner, we had a highway department, county highway department that was very political. If someone needed their, a buddy needed their street paved, their road paved, that their road got paved and the one right next to it didn't. One of the things we did was make sure we had the right city or county engineer, county highway superintendent, and let him come up with a plan for making sure that county roads were paved the way they should be, when they should be, and in the, in the appropriate priority. And that's what I would try to do as a, as a, as a city councilman, is work with the mayor's office to make sure that his administration, the city, through the city traffic department, city street department, comes up with a workable plan to make sure that streets throughout the city of Kokomo are paved according to priority and that they stick to the plan and pave those streets to that plan.
Okay, yeah, and I, I agree with these guys, you know. You got to, you got to, we don't know how, how many streets need repaired. I mean, you know, we, we can't drive over every street and say, okay, yeah. Well, we could if we rolled them down, you know, but we don't, nobody has that much time. But there's got to be somebody that has some kind of a figure on, you know, what it would cost to fix a street, you know? I mean, this city engineer or whoever would have the, and they should come to the city council and say, hey, look, you know, this is the money we need to fix the streets. You guys go to the mayor, get the money, you know? We'll get it done, you know what I'm saying? That's, you know, everybody's got to work together in this. You can't, you know, you can't expect the mayor to do it all, you can't expect the city council to do it all, you can't expect the city employees to do it all. Everybody has to work together in this stuff to make it work, you know? Not just one person can't do it all, you know? There's, there's no way. And that's because he, he don't have the time a day to do it. That's why you have different categories of employees, you know? You got your city council, you got your mayor, you got your engineers, you know? They all got to work together, you know, stand together on this stuff.
Phil, the city has concentrated on improving downtown Kokomo over the past seven years. Some critics believe other areas the city should receive the same attention. Evaluate the city's performance in downtown and explain what you will do if elected to either improve downtown or other areas of the city.
Complicated question. You know, the, the downtown area looks good. There are a lot of things that are being done there that are just terrific. Not everyone likes everything that's going on downtown, needless to say. But the down, listen, your downtown area basically attracts business and business owners. They'll come downtown, they want to see what kind of a downtown area that you have, and the downtown area has to be in good condition. And it was, it was getting pretty rundown, and so the, the downtown area looks good. You know, with the Y construction is, is going to help with the downtown area. There's a, a new hotel and conference center that's coming, and so I'm, I'm all okay with that. There are some areas outside the city, or outside the downtown area that need some improvements. You know, I, one of the things that I, that I am concerned about is attracting other businesses to Kokomo, such as industry, besides the couple that we have. We, you know, I'd like to see some attraction of other industry to the, to the outside of outlining areas of Kokomo, because in the long run, the industry is going to be the thing that is, that sustains the income that will allow all of these other projects to continue. So, that's it.
Mr. Bagwell?
Well, I think we've said several times, most of us have said that there's probably a lot, there obviously is a lot of emphasis in downtown and with less emphasis on the rest of the city of Kokomo, so I guess that pretty much answers the question of whether or not I feel that there should be more money spent the rest of, in the rest of the city of Kokomo, and I agree that there is. I think one of the things you can look at in attracting and looking at how the impact of what we do in the city impacts those who visit Kokomo is to look at, for example, traffic count. If you did a traffic study of downtown Kokomo versus traffic study of 931 and Markland, I don't think there'd be much of a, of a comparison there. The traffic count of 931 and Markland would be significantly higher than the traffic count in downtown Kokomo. People like to come to downtown Kokomo for certain reasons, most of which are for the courthouse, the city, the city government and attorneys. There are a few restaurants down there that people like to go to. One of the, the issues I have with promoting and the city of, the city of Kokomo promoting and spending money to bring restaurants, et cetera, into downtown Kokomo that compete with existing businesses is, we're using a restaurant that's been established in this community for a number of years, we're using their taxpayer dollars that are, have been given to the city of Kokomo, or taken by the city of Kokomo, depending on how you want to look at it, and promoting the, their competition. There's, there's, the city of Kokomo is establishing, helping establish restaurants in downtown Kokomo when there are restaurants in the rest of the city of Kokomo that, that may be struggling. Yet, they're the ones that are helping to support the new restaurant coming into downtown simply because it's downtown rather than someplace else. I'd like to see downtown Kokomo vibrant. It's never going to be a Carmel, it's never going to be, you know, those kinds of, that kind of a city. We're, we're Kokomo, we ought to be proud of the, what, what Kokomo is like and not try to be, look like, make us look like Carmel or Fishers.
Clark?
Well, I agree with Brad wholeheartedly, wholeheartedly. You know, they, what they're wanting to do is they're wanting to make Kokomo look like Indianapolis. We're not Indianapolis, we're not as big as Indianapolis, we never will be, you know? I mean, you can, you can just look around and see the things and just imagine what is down in Indianapolis and it's looking, trying to look exactly the same way, you know what I'm saying? And we're not going to be in Indianapolis, we never will be, you know? And like Brad said, you know, they're bringing all these businesses to downtown, and, and, and a lot of them's restaurants, and that, and I'm telling you, as a restaurant owner, I, I agree that, you know, it hurts other restaurants. Believe me, I have felt the crunch myself, okay? I am number one, felt the crunch on these other restaurants. And it's not, but it's not just the restaurants downtown, it's all over Kokomo, you know what I'm saying? Restaurants, pizza places, because anytime, any, any restaurant or pizza place opens up, they take from other businesses. It's not, it's not bringing more money into Kokomo. It's not, the only way you're going to bring more money into Kokomo, like Phil said, is open up more factories, you know what I'm saying? That's where you get your money, because you got revenue coming in, you got a factory over here making parts, send them out to other cities, them cities are paying us money for them, there's our revenue right there. It's not from other restaurants coming in, you know? Other restaurants are just hurting other, other restaurants is all they're doing. And I guarantee you, I can show you the figures on how I figure that, okay? If you'd like, I'll show you the figures on that, okay? Thank you.
Josh?
Hello? There we go, I must have hit the button. It screams two things to me, that crony capitalism is not capitalism, and corporate welfare. Who determines who gets what and how much they get? How do you determine? It just, it just screams it's, that it's, that it's, could be just ripe with, I don't know. I don't think we're using taxpayer money right when we pick and choose what businesses we want to take care of and then leave the other ones to fend for themselves. I just don't think that's a fair use of taxpayer money. Thank you.
One last question, and then we're going to go to the final remarks. Brad, we'll start with you. Public safety.
Excuse me. Public safety has been cited as a concern by some candidates. Do you feel, feel our police and fire departments are properly equipped and staffed? If not, how would you propose to improve public safety?
Fire department might be properly staffed. I haven't really looked into that. I'm sure Phil has some really good input on that. Police protection, again, I don't know that there've been a lot of new city police officers hired in the last couple of years, but there's been an awful lot of area that's been part of the annexation that now have to be covered by city police. I have heard from a few residents that are in annexed areas that say they've never seen a, a city police car in their area since they've been annexed, whereas they used to see county deputies patrol that area quite often. If that, if that's the case, which, you know, I, I take it from the person who told me that that's the case, that's probably a problem. There, there just aren't enough city police officers to, and probably not enough city police vehicles to, to patrol all of the new area that, that's been annexed into the city. So the, those who've been annexed are, are paying higher taxes and not necessarily getting the service that they were told that they would get after annexation. Public safety, if you know me from, from my county commissioner days, one of the, the highest priorities I had was public safety and getting, making sure that the, the sheriff's deputies and the police department and the fire departments and the ambulance services could all talk to each other. I was, I led the effort in getting a, a common radio system for all of them, so that a, a city police officer, if he was in a, in an emergency in Greentown, could get on the radio and talk to a sheriff's deputy that's, that's 50 feet away, as opposed to getting out of the car and having to go talk to him, or for me at the time, having my handheld radio, holding it inside the, the city police officer's vehicle, so he could hear what was going on, you know, 100 yards away. And that was ridiculous, and we got that fixed. I don't know if it's still the case, but at least at the time, there were, there, all of the city police, all the, the county deputies, all the fire departments, even some of the, all the volunteer departments that serviced Howard County and all the ambulances that serviced Howard County were all in the same radio system and could talk without any problem.
Clark?
Okay, I mean, really, for us to answer that kind of a question, we would have to do some research on how many officers we had five years ago, how many we got today, and what's, what's going to happen in the future, okay? Same with the fire department, you know? I mean, I know, I know for a fact that the fire department, you know, I know they're winning, because, you know, you got one fire station, I have three people. Didn't they used to have five or six, you know what I'm saying, in one fire station, you know, downtown? Didn't they used to have eight or 10? How many they got now, you know? You know, and you can't have three fires, firefighters and, and have two trucks. So what are you going to do? One guy's going to operate a truck by himself, you know? I mean, if you're going to spend the money, let's spend it where it needs to be, like on the fire department and the police department, you know? I've, I've been told that it, about three years ago, it was 115 police officers. Now they're down to about 100, and they want to drop it down to about 90. Now, you know, with these guys retiring, you're going to have to replace them, you know? You can, you know, you cannot operate a city when you don't have the emergency people to, to do the job they need to do, you know? You know, I've got a problem with my legs, and, and they bleed everyone's, and I got to call an ambulance, okay? When they bleed, I got to call an ambulance, okay? So there's a, I live about three blocks from the fire station, the city, the downtown fire station. I live about three blocks from there, okay? Now, if they, if they had the ambulance there like they used to have, then, you know, that ambulance could be there in just a couple of minutes. But now, they got to come all the way from Howard Community Hospital, all the way from St. Joe, which is about three miles from my house. So therefore, you know, I got to wait till they get three miles down the road, three or four miles down the road to get to me, you know what I'm saying? And when your leg's bleeding, you can, you can bleed to death real quick, you know? So, you know, what do I do? Just sit there and wait on them, you know? That's all I can do.
Mr. Layton?
The question is, do I feel we need more firefighters than policemen?
No, that wasn't, that was not the question.
Okay, would you repeat the question, please?
I'd be glad to. Public safety has been cited as a concern by some candidates. Do you feel our police and fire departments are proper, properly equipped and staffed? If not, how would you propose to improve public safety?
Yeah. There, there are numbers and equations and ratios I would need to answer that question, probably. I do believe that I am seeing and reading from the local newspapers here, a lot more violence in Kokomo. I don't necessarily believe that that's the fault of our police department, but it is an issue. I, I do believe it is an issue. I don't have access to, to determine, to make a, a logical case for needing more or less firemen or policemen, no, I don't have that.
Phil?
Okay, well, Jim said that the police department was down to around 100 officers, and I know the fire department's down to about 95. It's my understanding that the plan is to move the fire department down to somewhere around 90. But to answer the question about being properly equipped, I believe they are. I believe that the equipment is good, it's modern, it's up to date. Staffing, I can speak better to the fire department situation. When I went on the fire department, I was badge number 114. That was in 1969. When I left the fire department, we had 122 firemen. So if we're down to 95 firemen a day and we have increased the territorial limits of the city, we're stretching things. So I'm, I would only encourage the administration not to cut off your nose to spite your face. You're going to get to a point where you can't cover the needs. So that's how I feel.
One minute, Mr. Clark. One summary. Final remarks. Closing.
Okay, I just, you know, I, I hope you guys listened to everything we had to say, you know? We pretty much all agree on the same thing on a lot of issues, you know? So, you know, it's, it's up to you guys to decide who you're going to vote for, you know? I mean, I hope you vote for me, you know? I like to be on the council, and I like to work with the other councilmen and the mayor's office and, and all the other people in the city. office and all the other people in the city, you know? Because I didn't just think we all should all work together as a group, you know what I'm saying? Don't fight against each other, don't do this, just work, all the work together, you know what I'm saying? No matter who's the mayor, no matter who's the council, no matter who's in the city offices or whatever, everybody work together, you know? Instead of fighting over everything, you know? Okay, thank you.
Who's next, Josh? Mr. Lake?
All right, I'm just going to keep this short because I am supposed to be at work right now. As council member, I will see that your liberties, your personal liberties, your religious freedoms are, as much as I possibly can, not infringed here in Kokomo. I do believe in local business. I will stand up for the businesses and their right to be a business and to function as they see fit. I will see, as much as I possibly can, see if you don't, if we don't fill these seats with liberty-minded people, I could be in there by myself for the next term and nothing get accomplished. We have to fill these seats with liberty-minded people and you people are the ones that do that. But I will see to it the best of my ability to make sure that the first, foremost, basic jobs of this city are accomplished with the roads and the sidewalks and our fire departments and our police departments. Thank you.
Thursday?
Well, I served on Kokomo Center School Board for eight years and during that period of time, it was controversial and some things came up and I was responsible for not demolishing the old high school building, 300 East Superior Street. Now, having said that, you can't ride that horse forever. And that was in 1998. But the point that I want to make about that is this, no matter how popular or unpopular a topic is, I'm not afraid to stand up and fight for what's right. So if you're looking for someone who you can approach, someone you can talk to and someone that will speak for you, I appreciate your vote. I hope that you think that, my name is actually going to be last on the ballot, so I look at it like this, I hope you think that they've saved the best for last. So I appreciate your vote.
Brad Bagwell.
Again, having served 16 years as a county commissioner and I think it was four or five as party chairman, I've gotten into a few controversial issues. Hopefully, those of you who know me know that I've, I listen to both sides. I continue to listen even when everybody else wants to, wants people to just, you know, sit down, shut up, we don't want to hear anymore. We need to make sure that the city council continues to listen as long as people want to hear, as long as people want to talk. We need to hear, because the one person that we shut off at the end of, as part of a conversation or as part of a debate may be the one that has the right answer. If we don't listen to everybody, we're going to miss that answer. So my task as a city councilman would be to make sure that I listen to everyone. If they want to talk to me after the meeting, if the rest of the council decides that they want to shut off discussion, I'll be available as long as it takes and to listen to whoever wants to talk to me. And I know how to deal with difficult situations, having been a commissioner and having been a party chairman. You can't get much worse than that sometimes, so. That's probably one of the best titles I have is ex-party chairman and ex-county commissioner, so, thanks.
Thank you all. Let's switch out now and bring the Democrats. Everyone, let's begin, please. We have two incumbents, Bob Hayes, Mike Kennedy, and one challenger. Right? All right. Opening statements, Bob.
I want to say good evening to everyone and thank you all for coming out and taking time to hear what six people get up here and talk about and I, we hope it's informative. I also want to thank the sponsors of this event. It's through these forums that people really get to become informed voters and that's what we need more of, informed voters. I'm seeking another term on the city council because I know a good thing when I see it. This council is one of the most progressive councils in the state of Indiana. This council is about doing things. You think small, you'll be small. You think big, you can grow. And that's what we're going to do in Kokomo and we want to make this place attractive for those young professionals that are going to Hamilton County. I'm not trying to be a Carmel, you know what we're trying to be? We're trying to be Kokomo. And we're trying to be the best city that we can. We have other cities coming here to look at what we're doing, to emulate what we're doing, and I think that's a great testament. So at this time, I'll just shut up and pass the mic.
Good evening. My name's Mike Kennedy and I also thank all of you for coming. I appreciate the sponsors of the event, allowing us to talk to everyone. I'm seeking my, actually my fourth term, the third consecutive one. You know, I'm an old timer, so I served one way back in the 90s, if we can believe that. But I've been extremely humbled to be able to serve on this, with this group of individuals and to be able to do a part to help the city grow is truly a great experience for me. Just a little background, you know, I taught public school for a while, went to Delco and worked for 28 years. I'm back into teaching school again and really enjoying that opportunity as well. A different kind of student, those that are behind bars out at the Miami Correctional Facility. So I see a lot of different things there and have learned that there are things that we can do in the city to maybe keep some of those folks from doing what they're doing. But I'm looking forward to serving on another term and to seeing the city grow and improve and hope you give me the opportunity. Thank you.
As I said in the beginning, Steve Wyckart.
Hi, I'm, this is not on, is it? It's supposed to be if you didn't mess with it. Is it on now? Okay. Hi, I'm Steve Wyckart. I am not an incumbent. This is my political race. I do want to thank the perspective, the Tribune, the League of Women Voters and the Chamber for putting this on. It really is a true honor to be up here, I mean, even to be in the race and I, my background is teaching. I taught high school for five years and I'm currently teaching at Ivy Tech and I've taken the approach to this, that this is bigger than me. You know, win or lose, if I can get a handful of people involved and engage in new generation of public servants, really the whole community is one. And that's one of my main reasons. We have a huge void to fill once many of our council members and current political officers retire. People have to step up, they have to take the reins. But really, my main reason is in the back, my lovely wife and my son, I have a 14-month-old son. I left Kokomo after I graduated high school to go to college and really Kokomo wasn't a place that a lot of graduates wanted to return to, and that's changed. This community has become a destination, it's become a place that we're proud of and I want to continue that. I want my son and all the other generations who really were borrowing this for, were borrowing this from, they're going to inherit this and I want them to have a place they're proud to call home and that's why I'm running.
First question, Bob. The last group was a little hard on you two incumbents. The city's concentrated improving downtown Kokomo the last seven years. Some people in other areas of the city should receive the same attention, according to some. Evaluate the city's performance in downtown and explain what you would do if elected to improve either downtown or other areas.
Well, to evaluate the performance of downtown, the downtown is excellent, if I had to give it a grade. I think someone mentioned earlier, where do you bring visitors to when you bring them to your community? The first place you bring them to is your downtown Kokomo. And I remember many, many years ago, under a former mayor, one of the first times I got to sponsor an ordinance was for that gazebo that we have across from City Hall. And that was the beginning of the downtown that we have now. And that encompassed several different administrations. But one thing I'm very proud of is our downtown. What we're doing with downtown Kokomo, the businesses that we're bringing to downtown Kokomo are excellent. Now, other areas of the city. I'm a kid that grew up on the north end of Kokomo, about a block from the Carver Community Center, and about the only time you saw the city do anything in your neighborhood back in those days was a few days before election. Well, now, right up and down Afrisson Way and take it all the way far north as North Street and look what the improvements have been done in that community. It's sort of the theory, you do the infrastructure, you do the proper things for the infrastructure, you bring up the quality of life for those citizens in that area. Go all over Kokomo. Kokomo has grown, it looks beautiful. Do we have, are we where we need to be? No, we've got room to improve. But I think our downtown is a showcase, I know for a fact, I've talked to colleagues from other cities, they've come to Kokomo to look and see what we've done with our downtown.
Mike?
I'm truly impressed with what we've done with the downtown. It's certainly not all the council. We've had many private business owners who have pledged to come downtown and help the community. You know, the only really tax dollars that we have spent on the downtown is in the parking garage. We certainly partnered with the YMCA, which is a great project, and certainly, most people could not complain about having YMCA in the community. Most of the other businesses that are downtown, there have not been tax dollars spent, as mentioned before. Those tax dollars have been spent on fire stations, both in the south end and the southeast. Improvements working with IUK, improvements working with Ivy Tech and other areas of the city. So we have spread the wealth, so to speak, in working with many, many entities, housing developments, apartment complexes, but most of those are private business entities and we certainly will provide any help that we can. But those businesses are coming here because they see what kind of a community we have. And I certainly don't want to discourage any of them from coming into Kokomo and the more the merrier. Thank you.
Steve Wyckart?
The research is there that, you know, a community is as strong as its downtown and you have to start somewhere. And we have people throughout the entire nation coming to Kokomo to point to us as an example of how to survive an economic recession, how to recover, how to transform from an economic recession. No one can deny that Kokomo has completely been transformed in the past few years. When the question came up, I began immediately jot down some things that I remember just in the past few years, Kingston Square Apartments, Afrisson Way Housing coming forward, the IUK Housing, the new investment or the new announcement that's happened with Housing on the West Side, even Patriot Porcelain. Those things are beyond downtown. You know, once the foundation is there, you can begin to grow that. And the foundation is there and I don't think anybody has denied that we can continue that progress beyond downtown. But again, you have to start somewhere and people are coming and looking at Kokomo and saying, wow, how did you do this? How can we do this? We aren't Carmel, we aren't Indianapolis, we're Kokomo. And people recognize that and they're proud to be here and so am I.
Mike, has the streets and sidewalks been neglected by the city? And if they have, what will you do to facilitate or stop this or facilitate construction of cities, streets and sidewalks? I stumbled over that.
Hopefully, I won't stumble quite as bad on the answer. No, I, any city our size is constantly going to have concerns with streets and sidewalks. The past two winters have been especially bad because of all the thawing and freezing that we've had. You know, our city crews have been out. I don't know, I drive a lot of streets too and I see patches right now. I know the plans are in place and for the paving that will begin, just like it is every year. I think what happens for most of us that, you live in a certain area and you drive a lot of the same streets each and every day, so you don't get out into all the areas where there is new construction. And the city each year puts together a plan. You know, the council's responsibility is to allocate the dollars. This council does not allocate which street gets paved and which one does not. We certainly make suggestions and many of those suggestions are heard and they're evaluated. But our city crews, I know, I've seen the guys filling the potholes and doing what they can do for right now, and those are just quick fixes so that people like Josh don't bury themselves in a big pothole. The plans are there for construction and also for rehab, just like they are every year. And if the mayor requests more money for those kind of things, then certainly his council would be more than happy to give that to me. Thank you.
Steve?
I kind of find this to be a funny question because as cold as people want to paint, the merit of B, he didn't cause winter this year. It's something that we deal with every year in Indiana. We have freezing and thawing temperatures. Potholes are going to happen, it's the nature of the beast. One of the things I have to give a shout out to the city employees for, I know how responsive they are if you actually report the potholes. If it's done through Twitter, Facebook, even if you call, I bet the turnaround time to fill those is probably less than 48 hours. You know, the council came under budget last year, you know, $5.2 million, 8%. There are opportunities there to reevaluate things, but as Councilman Kennedy said, the council does not necessarily determine which streets will be paved and which ones won't. But if the citizens are responsive, if they do report those things, you know, they get on them right away and they do fix those.
Bob?
I'm going to echo some things that Councilman Kennedy said, that the council does not dictate when and where a pothole is filled. We do dictate the money that is spent for equipment so we can get those potholes filled. I think anybody that's going to come into this job needs to understand your role and your responsibility as a council person. So I too have seen the potholes everywhere. I work out at one of the major industries here in town and during this past winter, every time someone would come up and say, hey, aren't you that city councilman? I say, depends on what you want. But nine times out of 10, it's about a pothole. I've made some calls myself, they get worked on. Are they getting all of them? No. Name a city in Indiana through these two past winters that haven't had an epidemic of potholeitis. It's everywhere. So I, again, it's our responsibility as council members to make sure we've got the money, the allocations that are spent by the street department, and I think we've got a great street department, and I think one of their finest hours was during the tornado that struck this city, along with our firefighters and our police officers. I couldn't be more prouder of them.
Steve, the Kokomo council stopped a citywide smoking ban last year. What is your position on the smoking ban and if elected, will you seek to resurrect this legislation?
I think there could be a very healthy compromise between both sides. If I were elected to the Kokomo City Council, I would honestly propose an ordinance that would grandfather current establishments and to allow them the choice to either allow smoking or remain smoke-free, under the caveat that if that establishment changes names, moves, changes ownership, or the liquor license is transferred, they have to abide by the new policy. But the reality is, you know, smoking is one of the few health epidemics that we can completely control. It's 2015, we really should discourage smoking as much as we possibly can. I also recognize that businesses can attract a certain clientele and they rely on that clientele. And I would want them to have the opportunity to make arrangements in the event that they do have to become smoke-free. You know, we're trying to attract young families and we know that younger and younger people aren't smoking anymore. So it's time that we be progressive about that, but allow current establishments that opportunity to phase themselves out.
Mr. Hayes?
Well, I think it's pretty clear where I stood on the smoking ordinance. I sponsored it, I championed it, and I think I said that night I'd do it again if I had to do it all over again. So, but one of the things that we need to understand, it's a health issue. It's a health issue. It's a health issue for the individuals, it's a health issue for the city of Kokomo. I am not one to tell anyone where that they can't smoke. That was not the emphasis of the ordinance. Nowhere in the ordinance said that you can't smoke a cigarette. What the ordinance does do, and even the state, the state law says, it says where you can and where you cannot. And that's what we were going after. I think statistics would have shown and it would have proven out that it would not have a detrimental impact on the bars and the taverns that were concerned. Given an opportunity, I think it would have been something... Given an opportunity, I think it would have been something, by now, it would have been a foregoing conclusion. People get used to it. I've been in other cities in Indiana, in other states, and the restaurants are thriving, the bars are thriving. So, again, it's a health issue, and that's what my stance was. I'm never for putting anyone out of business or out of a job. And the other thing that I think was good, it showed diversity on this council. We are not lockstep with each other like our friends down in Indianapolis are. We can make up our own minds, vote our own conscience, and still have good governance amongst us, and still be friends, and still be colleagues, and get work done for the citizens of Kokomo.
Mike?
Well, I, like Bob, I expect everybody knows where I stood on the issue as well. But, the thing that, it certainly is, it's a health issue, nobody debated that, but I think the ultimate vote came up to a rights issue, and I would vote for that one again as well, that way. But, the one thing it showed on our council, as Councilman Hayes says, and I certainly respected those votes that were against or for the ordinance, is that probably one of the few votes that we've taken on this city council where we were split in that regard, it just goes to show that all members of this council, whether they're Democrat or Republican, understand the good things that are going on in this community. That vote, we've had some other votes where there were individuals who voted the way they thought they should vote, and I certainly have respected that, and I respected every vote that anybody's ever given on this council. Whether or not bar owners can smoke, or bar patrons can smoke, that's yet to be seen. Maybe that'll come up again at another time, and I'm sure we'll have another debate. That's what our society is all about, we're able to debate those issues. We take our votes, we come away as friends, and respect each other's votes, and that's as, when I was leading that council for seven years, that's what I tried to do each and every vote. And, you know, Bob and I are the best of friends. We were not on the same side on that issue, but that's okay, because that's the way the system is supposed to work.
Mr. Hayes? The council is currently considering legislation to license adult performers. What is your position on such licensing? And if elected, what will you do to facilitate or stop this ordinance?
Well, I guess when this came before, as in we really, it never did make the floor, but we did talk about it in our informational meeting prior to council, and it was so aptly displayed in the Kokomo perspective, that was one of the better cartoons I was in. What are you licensing them for? Who's going to enforce it? How are you going to enforce it? Are we ready to spend our tax dollars and getting more police officers to go around and check if dancers have licenses? Usually, a license is issued for a reason. You have a license to drive, you have a license to practice medicine. What are we going to do? Check their dancing skills? I think what this whole issue was about, it was a veiled attempt to close those places down. I don't frequent them, but ladies and gentlemen, whether we like it or not, they have a constitutional right to exist, and we have a right not to go in them if we disagree with that. And so, I really don't see that that ordinance is necessary. We have laws on the state's docket against human trafficking, we've got laws on what you can and cannot do in those adult-oriented type establishments. And the last thing I want to say is, when I first was on the council, I think it was during my first term, myself and Councilman Sheeline sponsored a tougher ordinance on those type of places. And before that, you could have them next to schools, you could have them next to churches, you could have a whole street of those places, and we toughened the ordinance up. Is the ordinance, can it be improved? Any ordinance can, but I think we're okay where we are right now.
Mike?
As Bob said, as council president now, he has the opportunity to, whether to pursue that particular piece of legislation, and I think it's been decided that we probably are not, because it's still in the committee. We were waiting on to see what the state was going to do with, they had several bills in the legislature, and to see how those came through their votes, but they've been busy working on other things. So, my feeling is this, if, you know, seven years ago, or seven and a half years ago, when we came on board, we had six or seven adult businesses like that, we're down to four. So, many of them are being taken care of on their own, they're just, the businesses aren't making what they should be making, or they'd still be there, I guess. So, I, you know, I don't frequent them either. I go by several of them in my neighborhood. I don't see a lot of vehicles there, so I don't know what kind of business they're doing, but I do know this, our law enforcement individuals are checking on, making sure things are being done properly, and I don't think the licensing would have done anything, because if these ladies are actually coerced into dancing, then they certainly would be coerced into going and buying a license. So, I don't see where we would have actually achieved anything in that regard.
Mr. Wyckart?
I should preface this, since both council members already said that they don't frequent them, I don't either. While my wife's in the audience, I want to make sure that's very clear. From my understanding with this ordinance, the way it's currently written, it's both unrealistic and unenforceable. And if the spirit of this ordinance is to truly address human trafficking, then we could look at creating an ordinance that is both enforceable and realistic, that touches on that issue. The state's currently dealing with it, I believe this council's already passed resolutions to deal with human trafficking, but if that's the issue at hand, then let's address the issue at hand. If we don't want strip clubs in our community, then, as Councilmember Hayes said, let's create tougher ordinances that prohibits them from becoming establishments here in our community. But as it's written right now, I just, I think our police officers are busy, you know, dealing with other crimes in our community, and I appreciate them doing that.
Mr. Kennedy? Some candidates for city council have expressed an interest in stopping the use of alcohol in city parks, specifically during the concerts held in Foster Park. What is your position on this practice?
We have, in Foster Park, when we have the concerts on the Saturdays and Fridays throughout the summer, thousands of people come. I hope you've all had an opportunity to go. The beer gardens that are established there are out of the way, the patrons have to stay within the fenced-in areas, and I personally don't have a problem with that. That is also a park board decision, by the way, and so the park board has decided that it's okay. Matter of fact, many of the proceeds, a certain percentage of those proceeds from those alcohol sales are given to the charity that is being sponsored that evening. So, I've had more individuals say that we need to expand that, and I'm not in favor of that, but, and I don't think anyone needs to be carrying through the park, but for those events, and those special activities like that, a beer garden with a fenced-in area, and it is policed, and I haven't heard of any issues with that, no one has called me or complained to me about that. It's more about the noise of some of the bands playing than anything else. But everybody has a great time, and no one has to go over near those places, they're far enough out of the way, and for those who enjoy having a beer while they're listening to the music, I think that's fine.
Steve?
I think with the raving success of the concerts in the park, we have proven that we can, as adults, consume alcohol in moderation and responsibly. There are plenty of police officers there who are enforcing it. I haven't read any headlines where there have been major instances of crime there. We have, one of the events I went to, one of the MCs had asked how many people were from out of town, and I'd say 85% of the people who were there were from out of town. So, this has become a tourist attraction for our community. There's a lot of money that comes in as a result of those. As mentioned, the proceeds can go to various institutions, various avenues, but I think it's been proven that we can, as adults, handle ourselves appropriately in public.
Bob?
Well, I've worked several of those events in the park. Matter of fact, the Rib Fest was one of the first ones to go to that situation. And there was a lot of talk about the drinking in the park, but as Councilman Kennedy has said, and I think a lot of this is controlled by the Alcohol Beverage Commission too, you have a defined area where drinking can be done. Our law enforcement officers are on patrol during these events, and they make sure people stay in that area. Even some of the people that are putting on the events help police that issue. Has it went without any problems? You always are going to have a knucklehead in the crowd, and that's why we have a wonderful police department to deal with knuckleheads that want to come out and drink too much. So, I think with, as long as we are making sure that licensed bartenders are behind the bar, back there, they're being responsible in who they serve and how much they serve, I think it's a good thing. It just has to be highly controlled. And the final analysis on all those events, there is a charity organization that's going to benefit from those events, whether it's the Carver Community Center, or whether it's United Way, or any other organization, those organizations do benefit, and they do a lot of good work, and I don't think having drinking in the park under controlled conditions is a bad thing.
Let me back up a minute. Mr. Wyckart, you said at the end of your last statement that if you wanted to put together tougher legislation to deal with strip clubs, to get rid of strip clubs, that could be done. Did I understand that correctly? And if I did, would you, are you willing to champion that effort?
Yeah, absolutely. I think that it's one of those things that we need to deal with within our community that, as mentioned before, at one time, we had multiple strip clubs, and I think that it can be an issue of perception in our community. We're trying to be progressive, we're trying to attract young families, we're trying to attract new industry, and if that means getting rid of establishments such as strip clubs, I think it'd be appropriate.
Mr. Hayes, how would you react to that proposal?
Again, you can control where they go, you can control that they're not around children, you can control they're not around schools, you can control that they're not around churches, and I think we've got laws on our books that cover that. Without breaking the law ourselves, again, whether we like it or not, they have a constitutional right to exist. How do you control them? The supply and demand. Councilman Kennedy says, you go by there, I don't see a lot of cars at those places. There's cars there, but there's not a lot of cars. And eventually, if you're not making money, they're going to shut down. So, we went from seven to four. Might be another one by this time next year.
Mike?
I think many of the establishments and places where cities have tried to close those establishments have fallen under the First Amendment rights of the Constitution. And, you know, I heard earlier about people concerned about all the litigation that we're involved with, that would just cause more, because it has been many, many law cases, and many losses by cities for those law cases, to try to shut down some of these places, and they back themselves under the Constitution, and that's okay, if that's the way the courts rule. So, you, before we would want to sponsor one of those, an ordinance like that, we would certainly want to check to see all the case law that's in effect, because you certainly know that a lawsuit would follow, and we'd want to see what the results of all those were, both past and current, and see how we would handle a situation like that. But if it was legal to, or it was okay for us to do that, I would not be in any problem with closing those businesses, and be just fine with me, but I do believe there's a constitutional activities that are involved in those things, and I think we'd have some problems there.
Steve, do you have anything to add to that? No? Bob?
Public safety has been cited as a concern by some candidates. Do you feel our police force and fire departments are properly equipped and staffed? If not, how would you propose to improve public safety?
I'll cut to the chase. Yes, they're properly equipped and staffed, in my opinion. You asked my opinion, and that's how I feel. Can we do more? Of course we can do more. But do we need troop carriers running up and down the street for our police department? I don't think so. But do they need to have the proper accreditation, the proper credentials, sending them off to FBI schools to learn how to do crime scene investigation? I think those are the things that we can, as a city council, can fund. Our role with the police department and the fire department is a fiduciary one. We're responsible for setting the budgets and approving the budgets for those departments. We don't man them, we don't tell the chiefs who and how many they're to have, and I think that the police department and the fire department that we have here, in comparisons to cities of this size, is an excellent one. But we can always do more, and I've been through several budget hearings, I've chaired them many times as finance chair, and believe you me, the chief of the fire department and the police department, they'll speak up if they need more. So, I think they are well-equipped, and they are getting the job done and protecting the citizens of Kokomo with fire protection and law enforcement and protection.
Mike?
I also feel like we have a well-maintained fire department, well-manned, well-maintained and manned police department. I also have been on several of those budget hearings, Bob has done a great job, by the way, as finance chair, I get to follow his footsteps for a change on that this year. But, the chiefs of both those departments have always requested the very best equipment, the very best in training, and we have provided that. We have to give those individuals the responsibility to know how many, how much manpower they need to run their departments. That is not a city council function. If they need more manpower, then they would come to us and request more money for that, and then we would have to make the consideration. But as we know, as far as all the city council members currently today, we have fulfilled their request for both equipment, training, and money for salaries. And unless they ask us for more, and if they would, we would certainly consider that. But as of today, I certainly feel that we must be manned properly and have the proper equipment. And, you know, adding to some of the enhancements that we've done, we've built two new fire stations, and contrary to what was said earlier, there's no station, no truck that doesn't have manpower unless there's vacations involved, and there is, there are state requirements that require certain minimum manning requirements for each apparatus, and we cannot function if you don't have that activity. So, if there's needed more, or more is needed, then we will certainly look at that and allocate the funds for that.
Steve?
As far as staffing the police and fire, obviously, that's an issue of personnel of the mayor, but if it comes to having proper training and certifications, I am a huge proponent of continuing education. You know, I work for one of the colleges here in the community, I buy into it. We need to make sure our public safety officers have the best and most modern equipment so they can do their job effectively. I just saw a report in the Tribune that talked about how crime is down in our community. I haven't seen anything that would be contrary to response times being in jeopardy with our place and fire. So, you know, as far as coming to the council and asking for the training, the certification, the equipment, again, I applaud the current council for being so fiscally responsible and having the money that they have that opportunity to provide that for our public safety officers.
Mike? I believe we're to you.
Yes, I think so.
Some of the candidates for the Kokomo Common Council have expressed their opposition to the East and West annexations, which became effective two years ago. What is your position on annexation? And if elected, would you seek further annexation, or would you seek to de-annex those areas that were affected?
Well, I can tell you, I won't seek to de-annex any areas that were, I'm not sure you could even, I don't know whether you could even do that or not, but there probably is a process. But I know that was a very, both those annexations, very emotional issues. I still believe they were necessary for the growth of our city. I still believe they were necessary for the growth of our city, and I certainly believe that today, I would not change a vote on either one of those annexation activities. You know, I was president of the council when those, when those were there, activities were occurring, and, you know, we heard a lot of opposition, obviously, and I'm sure there are still people that are very, still unhappy about it. But I think necessary growth for our community was to do what we did. Many cities in the state have done the same. All annexations cannot be voluntary, and these certainly were not, but I would not sponsor or vote for a bill to de-annex, and I would stand behind the votes that I've made in the past on both those issues.
Steve?
I, I would not support de-annexation at all, but I'm also here, I'm not running on a platform of continuing annexation right now, and I don't know of any discussions that are happening where it's even being talked about to continue it. So, my answer will be very short on that, which is, I'm not in favor of de-annexation, and I'm not running on a platform to annex right now.
Bob?
I'll have to echo my two colleagues' comment, I'm not in favor of de-annexing anything. Again, as Councilman Kennedy said, I don't know if there's a law that you can even do that. I am in favor, and I voted in favor of the annexations while I was on the council. Did we make everyone happy? No. That was a very contentious issue, and some people took it personal, and I can understand that, but I think what the city can do to soothe those fears is to do the best job we can in providing the services to those people that were annexed, and eventually, it'll be a situation where perhaps they'll say, well, maybe it wasn't as bad as I thought it was going to be. So, as far as any further annexation, show me what you're talking about, but my first inclination right now is I'm not for any further annexation at this time.
Don, may I add one? Sure. We actually had three annexations. You know, we had one voluntary one, which nobody wants to talk about too much. Cotswold Hills residents asked us to be brought into the city so that they could actually get sewer services there because of the groundwater situation they had with their wells, and not their wells, with their septics. So, that was one that was a voluntary, so not all of them have been antagonistic, so to speak.
Steve? The state legislature and Governor Pence recently passed, signed, and then fixed the Religious Freedom Restoration Act. The city of Indianapolis has a civil rights ordinance to protect the LGBT community from discrimination. What is your opinion of the RFRA, and if elected, will you seek legislation similar to that adopted in Indianapolis?
First off, I don't think RFRA was necessary. I think it's a black eye for the state, and without question, I would absolutely support an ordinance to extend civil rights to the LGBTQ community. Again, we have to be competitive, we have to grow our, our population, we have two major institutions of higher ed that we're trying to attract talented, and the best, and the brightest, and we can't do that if we're going to discriminate against people. That's plain and simple. There are communities like Martinsville who are trying to overcome their past, our past isn't much different than Martinsville. This is an opportunity for us to look progressive and to, to bring those people to this community, and really to extend something that should have been extended a long time ago to a group of people that should never have been marginalized. So, without question, I would absolutely support something like that.
Mr. Hayes?
My opinion of the, the legislation that the state passed, repeal it, get rid of it. Change the state constitution to cover sexual orientation, the civil rights constitution to cover sexual orientation. I would be in favor of passing that type of legislation for the city of Kokomo. We have to be an open community, open to everyone, and that includes those individual sexual orientation. Woe be it on to me to judge. The good Lord will do the judging of whether anybody's right or wrong. So, I would be against any kind of legislation that would restrict the rights of any individual in the city of Kokomo.
Mr. Kennedy?
I certainly was not fond of the RFRA either, and as Councilman Hayes, I were listening to the first question to our friends on the, on the other side, I mentioned to him that, you know, I'm not sure that we, we may, we may currently have some legislation in place covering civil rights, I'm not sure of that. I know that none has been passed in the, in the past two terms, but I do know that we agreed, both agreed at the time, we were going to look into that and see if there's already something there, because we may not have to legislate anything else. But if, if, if there was a legislation that came before me guaranteeing, you know, civil rights of all individuals, I would certainly vote for it.
Okay. I think we're getting close to the end of time, so let's move to, whoop.
Move to closing remarks. Mr. Hayes?
Well, once again, I'd like to close with how I started. Thank you for coming out and listening to myself and my colleagues here. One of the things that these type of events do is gives you an insight into how we think, where our minds are, and how we're going to govern as city council persons. I'm simply going to ask you, I need your vote. So, I'm talking to all the Democrats out there, because we're talking about primary, but I'll, I never got into a race thinking I was going to come in last. I got into the race thinking I was going to win, and so, I'm also going to extend that same invitation, voters willing, and God willing, in the next forum that we have before the general election. I need your vote. Trust me with your vote, and I, I promise, I'll do the best job I can for you in an intelligent, measured, and thoughtful way. Thank you for listening to me tonight.
Mike?
Once again, I also would like to thank everyone for coming. As I said earlier, it's been a humbling experience to serve on this, serve this community, and I've certainly enjoyed it. You know, I try to have fun with this activity, try not to take myself too seriously, and, and just enjoy the whole process. And I do want to serve another term, that's the reason I'm here, it's the reason I've committed myself, and, you know, we've had a great council, both Republicans and Democrats, you know, we've, we've got about a ninety-nine percent voting record of where we all vote together, so we know good things have happened. I've been proud of the fact that, you know, it's the seven, seven years that I was president of the council, we never had a vote that was Republican against Democrat, and that's the way the city council should be. So, I ask you for your vote, I appreciate what you've done for the city, I want to serve again, and hopefully I can do that. Thank you very much.
Steve?
I thought about this, and I thought I could give a stump platform speech, but really, I want to keep my message very simple. I'm running, and I'm here because I truly care about this community. I care about the future of it, I care about the, the direction in which it's going, and I want, again, as I mentioned, my son to inherit something that he's proud to call home, a place where he'll raise his own family. I want to be clear, I'm not running out of spite, despite anybody, I'm not running as a bucket list politician, and I'm certainly not running because I want to put the fear of God in you that you've lost your constitutional rights. I'm running because I want to see Kokomo continue the track that it's on right now, because it is on the right track. And if you believe in that, you can believe in me, and I appreciate your support, I'd appreciate your vote, and I'm here for you. And thank you all for being here tonight, and thank you for listening to us.
Thank you, and thank you, and we're done.